Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special board meeting of the Halton Catholicism School Board on Monday, April 8, 2022. This special meeting is called under procedural by law 4.2.1, which gives the Chair the authority to call a meeting. Also, as per Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, the reason for special meeting is to deal with matters that may arise during between regular meetings, and that requires action of society before the next regular meeting or to dedicate an entire session to one of more particular matters. The reason for this meeting is specified under item 4.1, the agenda, COVID-19 health and safety measures in schools. I have received emails from staff and parents about COVID protocols and absentee rates in schools, which do affect students' student achievement. Section 169.1 of the Education Act says every board shall promote student achievement and well-being. I do understand today is Easter Monday, but the health and well-being of our staff and students are paramount and warrants the calls for the special meeting. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Tonight, we have some trustees attending in person and remotely. In order to be recognized, please use the chat box only and type "hand up" to replace in queue. For those in the boardroom, okay, do not need to turn your mics off tonight, but for those that are in remotely, please remember to turn your mics on and camera when you are recognized to speak. Turn off your camera and mics otherwise. Trustees, please remember that if you speak when you are not recognized or when you do not have the floor, your mics will be muted. Land acknowledgement, opening prayer, national anthem, and the oath of citizenship. I ask staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today...
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today on these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Enemals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Trustee Boy, could you please lead us in the opening prayer, national anthem, and the oath of citizenship?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and through you, I'd like to ask everyone to join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, and Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. I'd like to start, given the topic area we're discussing tonight, to share Pope Francis' prayer for protection during the pandemic, so I'd ask you all to join me. Oh, Mary, you shine continuously on our journey as a sign of salvation and hope. We entrust ourselves to you, health of the sick. At the foot of the cross, you participated in Jesus's pain with steadfast faith. You, salvation of the Roman people, know what we need. We are certain that you will provide so that, as you did at Cana of Galilee, joy and feasting might return after this moment of trial. Help us, Mother of divine love, to conform ourselves to the Father's will and to do what Jesus tells us. He who took our sufferings upon himself and bore our sorrows to bring us through the cross to the joy of the resurrection. Amen. In the name of the Father, and Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Now, I'd like to ask you all to join me in singing our national anthem and for our oath of citizenship.
Through pages now, in our sky. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, King of land, glorious and great. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Moving on to the next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? Trustee Carabella, trustee Carabella?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I have no additions. I would just wanted to say I will not be approving the agenda of this special board meeting, as no accompanying background materials or documentation has been provided to emphasize the particular nature of this meeting and to present a motion to be voted on. This meeting has been called when there are no new ministry or Halton Public Health information or directives for school boards. And this agenda, to me, does not constitute a transparent meeting for me as a trustee or for the community. You mentioned that you received some letters, but that is not the same as asking the whole community to be able to provide input for this meeting.
I have asked a very clear question. Are there additions to the agenda? And I got a different answer, but thank you for your thoughts. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I shall take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Ohan Chanata?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Guzo?
In favor.
I'm sorry, I think I jumped ahead too fast. I'll need a move. I have a second, please.
I'll come with it.
Vice Chair, right here, moves. May I have a second?
I can second, Trustee Guzo.
Trustee Guzo seconds. I'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Ohan Chanata said you're in favor. Trustee Ohan Chanata?
Yes, I'm still in favor. Thank you.
Trustee Guzo?
In favor.
Vice Chair, right here?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa? Is Trustee De Rosa there? No? Trustee Antomasis and the press? Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mashe Hammer?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiba?
In favor.
If five are in favor, one opposed, the motion carries. The agenda is approved. Moving on to the next order of business, that's declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared at this point in time? Seeing none, we move on to the next order of business, which is action items. We have one action item tonight, item 4.1, COVID-19 health and safety measures in schools. I will start off and open up the floor to trustees. As mentioned in my preamble, I have received emails from staff and parents about COVID protocols and high absentee rates in several schools. There are several schools where students have to gather in the cafeteria due to staff shortages. This adversely affects students' achievements, which is a concern and should be a concern of each and every trustee. I will now open up the floor to trustees to speak to this, and any trustees who have questions on this, I will hand the floor to trustees. It's an open discussion. It's a concern. Vice Chair, right here?
Sorry.
Do you have anything to add to this?
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so just the same, I believe that there is some urgency around this topic matter. I too have received emails and phone calls from constituents, sorry, from stakeholders around the COVID-19 piece, the changing landscape, some of the things we're seeing in our schools right now with absenteeism rates and health and safety protocols. So I do think it's important that we have this conversation. I know that I have some questions. Let's see if our fellow trustees have some questions, and perhaps we can get some better clarity on what's happening in our schools right now with respect to COVID-19 and health and safety measures that we currently have in place, and what's happening perhaps at the provincial level that we need to discuss as well.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair, right here. I have a speaker list here. Trustee Guzo, would you hand up for this item or for the previous item?
No, it's for this item. I didn't have my stuff for the agenda, but that's okay.
Okay, Trustee Guzo, you have a vote.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for calling this meeting. And one of your comments was in regards to absenteeism and students having to gather in cafeterias for classes. So I guess my question is to Director Daley in regards to absenteeisms and classes being canceled or being merged, for lack of better words, due to COVID-related absenteeisms. If he could give us an update on what those numbers are, as asked?
Thank you, Trustee Guzo. I have to go over to Director Daley. You ready?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the difficulty to cover classes really comes from two factors. But in terms of our staff, our staff absenteeism, and by staff I'm referring to educators, staffs, the teachers, ECA's, EA's, you know, we took a look at the period a few weeks before March break, so three weeks before March break, and then the period since March break, and we have seen the increase in absenteeism at both elementary and secondary, so combining the two panels, but a 20% increase in staff absenteeism since we returned from March break. And certainly looking at, I mean, the greater number of our students, our elementary students, if we use our elementary schools as a bit of a measuring stick, since we've returned from March break, the first three weeks back, there was a steady increase in absences at the elementary level as well.
Director Daley, point of privilege? I don't know.
That was me, I'm sorry.
That all I hear, so okay, that's all I hear is the bang.
Apologies, that was me.
Thank you, sorry, can you just repeat that last part?
So certainly at the elementary level, in terms of our student attendance, it has grown significantly since we returned from March break, from an average of about 1,100 students over the course of a week, up to about 1,600 students over the course of the week. So we are seeing that increased absenteeism prior to the break. While we certainly weren't able to fill all of our staff absences, that we were doing a much better job of it. So certainly, both at the elementary and secondary levels, since we returned from the break, we've had a greater instances of having to combine students, as both Trustee Guzo and the Chair noted, at the secondary level, sometimes combining classes in the cafeteria to be supervised, and at the elementary level, continuing to have to pull some teachers to cover classes. So it has been, certainly been a challenge since we've returned back from the break.
Thank you, Director Daley. Trustee Guzo, do you have a follow-up question?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, Director Daley, do you have the stats, though, on that? Like, I'm assuming you have an idea of how many classes have had to have been merged and the impact that it's had?
Actually, we thank you, Mr. Chair. We don't collect that data at the secondary level. As I said, we do have statistics around staff absence rate, and combined, it's up about 20% since, over the three weeks since we've returned back from the break, and that's for our full-time teaching staff. It would be, the other complicating factor is for our occasional teachers, that although we don't have a specific number for them, I'm sure it would be similar. So as we have people unable to get to work because of absence, we have fewer people to be able to pick up those classes behind them. So that exacerbates the problem, particularly in secondary, but also at elementary as well. At least, although it's not ideal at secondary, you can combine classes into, for example, into the cafeteria, and students can get some work done. That option does really not exist to the same extent at elementary. So there's no doubt we've really been challenged by this over the past, over the past three to four weeks.
Thank you, Director Daley. Moving on down to the speakers list, we have Trustee Ohan Chanata. Ohan Chanata, we have Vice Chair, right here, and then Trustee Murphy. Trustee Ohan Chanata, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to my guest, Director Daley. Director Daley, if you could please just summarize for me and for us, maybe, the calls that you've had with the province as regards to their stand in regarding to the new COVID-19 COVID protocols, and as well, my second part to that would be the calls that you're having with Halton Public Health. Any update or summary in that regard would be very helpful at this point?
Director Daley? Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So, calls with the ministry over the past couple of weeks, and certainly the most recent call, really indicated no change in direction either from the Ministry of Education and through them, through the Chief Medical Officer of Health. We've had no updated or no changes from Halton Public Health either, other than to say, in a general way, the Chief Medical Officer of Health for Halton Region, Dr. McGann, strongly recommends to Halton residents that they continue wearing high-quality masks in indoor settings, where physical distancing may be a challenge. So while there's been no specific mandate to schools, the Halton Public Health is certainly encouraging people to wear masks indoors when they feel or when that physical distancing is not able to be maintained. I think all trustees have probably seen other publications, one from Public Health Ontario, indicating that, you know, increased use of masking would potentially be a mitigating factor, but there's been no change from the Ministry of Education or from the Chief Medical Officer of Health with regards to school to this point. Just a reminder, I guess, to trustees, that since we've come back from March break, masks are not required to be worn by either students or staff. They certainly may do that, and some students and staff continue to do that. We're not actively checking or confirming for daily screening. We are requiring or asking, I guess we're asking, parents and staff to do their daily screener, and if they fail their screener, to stay home. We do continue to encourage respiratory etiquette and hygiene at the school level. We have a greater number of faculty units installed in our classrooms, but certainly we're seeing, despite all of those measures, we continue to see, or at least for the first few weeks back from the break, increased absenteeism of the staff and student level.
Thank you, Director Daley. Trustee Ohan Chanata, do you have a follow-up question?
I do, and thank you for that, and thank you, Director Daley. So my second question would be in regards to messaging that we're sending out. So as per your previous statement, you know, they're strongly recommending masks in an environment indoors where you cannot keep two meters apart. Are we sending messaging through our communications department to our staff, our students, our parents, to support that? Because, you know, we've traditionally followed public health, and as pointed out many times, we are not doctors, so we follow public health recommendations. Are we sending that messaging out in that regard?
Director Daley, we've not sent any updated messaging out from public health, from our local public health, because it has not been specific to the school setting. So yeah, I guess that's my answer.
Thank you, Director Daley. Moving on down to the speakers list, I'll go to Trustee Murphy first, then Vice Chair, right here. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I, you know, we're in a situation that's of nobody's fault or nobody's doing, and as mentioned previously, we've been following all the, all of the requirements and mandates. But when you say, Director Daley, you said a few times, we came, come back from the break, but really, the reality is, is yes, the break may have a little bit to do with it, but also a major contributing factor is the reduction in the mandatory safety protocols. So as a result of that, we're seeing a continuous positive trend, that it's not cyclical, it's hockey stick, right? It's going, it's going straight up. So, so we know that the reduction in the mandated safety protocols have resulted in these consistent trends, trending upwards, not cyclical. And then the remedies we have really are self-isolating, missing school, and as we mentioned, there's, you know, the issues that we would have to put in occasional teachers. So I'm assuming there's no quick fix, so let's, let's be frank. Without a quick fix, maybe you can give us an overview on what is our occasional teacher pool? What is the situation? I'm assuming not only our board, but all 72 boards in Ontario are scrambling and demanding and have a huge need for occasional teachers, who happen to be human beings, who function in the real world and who get sick and get viruses also. So maybe you can talk about that. And if we continue on this path, hockey stick path that we're on, what's the, what's our plan or what's our alternatives? What can we do here today as a group of fairly sharp people to try and mitigate that and stop that hockey stick, that trend from going up?
Director Daley? Well, I can't really, I don't think I can comment on the last question in terms of, I can't speak to, to public health measures. Certainly with regards to our occasional teachers, as Trustee Murphy noted, we're like many boards in the province, we could certainly use more. We've been trying to interview and hire occasional teachers on a weekly basis throughout the school year. As faculty of education students finish their year over the next several weeks, that will provide some opportunity for additional occasional teachers. But certainly, it won't warrant enough that we would, we would have as many as we would like to have. We'd probably like to hire, you know, in the range of another 200 to 300 occasional teachers, but the availability is simply not there at this point. So we do continue to hire. We have used our occasional teachers that are retired, that could extend the number of days that they're available for this year. To be quite honest, Trustee Murphy, you know, not, not all retired occasional teachers probably feel comfortable being in a school setting right now. So while I can't speak for all of them, that would maybe limit even our ability to leverage those, those additional days. It's certainly, like I said, at secondary, it's not ideal to say, I'm not suggesting that, you know, having students with work left for them and that they can work on in the cafeteria, the library, is ideal by any means, but at least we can keep students in the building, but it's not, it's not the classroom instruction for sure. And at the elementary level, when we have to pull other teachers from the arts or other subject areas to go into regular classrooms, then that has an impact on the program that they're delivering as well. When we have to reallocate some of our itinerant CEC staff into schools, which we've done, that takes away from the support that they would generally offer as well. So certainly, if the trajectory of absence continues, there, as you've noted, there are no quick fixes down the road. We're hoping, I guess, and that's, you know, we're hoping that this wave will peak and receive, but that's hope. And certainly, as you've noted, that doesn't seem to be the way that the numbers are going, at least that they are having a moving hits, we've, we've pulled back at some of those factors, some of those safety factors.
Thank you, Director Daley. Trustee Murphy, do you have a follow-up question?
No, yeah, thank you, Director Daley, for your, for your comments and your frank answers. You know, we're in a difficult, we're put in a very difficult situation where, you know, you see the train coming and we're standing on the middle of the track, so, you know, we need, we need to come up with a strategy. Again, we don't have, we don't have the legal rights to mandate public health, understood, but it seems that we all know where this is heading, so, so thank you.
Trustee Murphy, on the speakers list, Vice Chair, right here? Trustee Ohan Chanata? Trustee O'Brien? Vice Chair, right here, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So just a question, Director Daley, so recognizing that you had mentioned that there has been no specific public health, the messaging hasn't been specific to schools with that public health messaging around the masking recommendations and such. Is there a plan to have a meeting with public health in the near future that would be specific to school-based guidelines? Is that something that will be happening, given the landscape we're in right now?
Director Daley? Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. There's no specific school meeting that's set up. Our last few meetings with public health have focused more on, on trying to reinstitute school-based vaccination clinics, to my knowledge. We haven't communicated anything else specific to schools from public health, because they haven't asked us to communicate anything specific to schools with regards to Halton Region. The kind of the general caution or general suggestion or encouragement, I guess, for people in Halton to continue or to wear masks, continue to wear masks when they can ensure physical distancing, has been a more of a general statement from, from Dr. McGann, but we have had no specific direction with regards to our protocols in schools.
Thank you, Director Daley. Vice Chair, right here, you have a follow-up question?
I do, and just to comment on that before my question, and I think perhaps that that's a gap, you know, given that that is a recommendation that they are making across our region, I don't know that that's getting to where it needs to get to, and knowing what we have going on in our schools, I think there's probably an opportunity there to have that conversation with public health and maybe inquire about those specific pieces for school, just to comment. But I guess the question that I have is if school boards, as we know, we don't have any jurisdiction to implement mask mandates, and really, that shouldn't be on us, you know, can schools be looking at putting other measurements in place to protect our staff and students? Because to Trustee Murphy's point, this is only going up. We're seeing it affect staff absenteeism. only going up. We're seeing it affect staff absenteeism, student achievements, and, you know, what else could we be looking at doing to try to protect our staff and students with further measures or additional measures?
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Director Daly?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, as a senior staff, up until this point, I don't believe we've implemented school-level, school-level measures to any wide degree that have not been either suggested or mandated either by the province or by our local public health. So if we think about some of the measures that were in place, that have been either relaxed or were taken back, one is, well, there's a number of them. So we had tried to keep fairly, fairly strict cohorts. We had our recesses set up in a certain way that students would, would, would remain in their cohort. We organized our lunches that way. I guess there's, those are some potential measures that we could take. But again, we've never really taken measures on our own as a board without some direction, from the very least, from our local public health. And as trustees would be aware, most of those COVID protection strategies or measures have either been lifted or scaled back over the past three to four weeks.
Thank you, Director Daly. On the speakers list, there's Trustee O'Herne and Trustee Brian. Trustee O'Herne, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Daly. I'm sorry, Director Daly, I just can't get off this topic. So the statement from Dr. McGann E. indicates, you know, as you had mentioned, that she strongly, it states, quote, "I strongly recommend Holden residents continue wearing high-quality masks in indoor settings where physical distancing may be a challenge." So when we say we don't, it doesn't specifically say schools, you, you're not saying that you don't think that physical distancing inside our schools is a challenge. I, I'm not there, and I, and I do deflect to you and your opinion, but I, are you saying that physical distancing would not be a challenge in our schools in Holden?
Director Daly? No, I did not say that.
Okay, so, so in my personal opinion, I, I, for the good of the group, and, and people may disagree with me, if, if she's strongly recommending that we wear masks in indoor settings, which a school is, where physically, physical distancing can be a challenge, and, and you indicated, you know, you didn't say that it wasn't a challenge. I don't know how a school can be left out of that. Could you help with that?
Director Daly, Trustee Brian has a question.
Well, I'm not sure what the suggestion is. If the suggestion is that the board strongly recommends that students and staff wear masks, yeah, the board could do that.
Yeah, that's my point. Because earlier, when I'd asked about messaging, the statement was that, you know, based upon that statement, it didn't refer to schools. But I think, you know, the conversation that we've just had, we could refer to a school. Thank you, Director Daly, for that.
Thank you, Trustee O'Herne. Speakers list is Trustee Brian and Vice Chair Agnew. Trustee Brian, you have the floor.
Thank you through, thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and to my fellow trustees. When I first came to this meeting, I had, I had a documentation, so I wasn't exactly sure what the item was about. As the conversation has developed, the mention of hiring more occasional teachers has been mentioned and discussed. My wife is an occasional teacher, therefore, I am right now declaring a conflict of interest. So I will not be participating or voting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Brian. Shall we go to it? Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So just a couple other questions that I have, that's okay. So I do have a question around reporting and tracking. So how are we currently, how are we currently reporting to our school communities if there has been an instance of COVID in a classroom? Is that still happening? Are we still letting parents know that there has been, that their child may have been exposed? And are we keeping track of that information?
Director Daly? Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So we are continuing to provide letters to classrooms where there's a possibility that there's a positive COVID case. So although that's no longer a requirement, we've kept that practice in place. We report daily absence as a, as a percentage of school population to the ministry. Originally, I think the ministry had looked at revisiting that at some time in April, but I think it's going to continue till the end of the school year. And we don't track individual numbers at the school level of, I guess we could say presumptive COVID cases. So we don't track them individually, nor does, nor does the, well, yeah, we don't track.
Thank you, Director Daly. Vice Chair Agnew, do you have a follow-up question?
I do. So I just have a clarification. So schools are still sending out those notifications via email to parents who has been exposed in the class?
To the class, yes.
To the class, okay. And then the second piece is, for those students, and this might be, I don't mean to make it specific to high school, but that's where I've had the concern come. But it would be applicable, I would think, to both panels. But for those students who are in fact, who have in fact tested positive or are symptomatic and are not able to return because of screening and because of recommended isolation protocols from public health, are they able, or what mechanisms do we have in place for them to access what they might be missing? And the reason I say that is that there have been parents who have been transparent with me to let me know that kids are in fact going back before the recommended five days. As soon as kids seem to be okay, they are going back into the schools because they're not able to access. And given the gaps that we've seen in learning for a number of our students because of everything going on, they're afraid they're going to fall further behind. And so I'm just trying to mitigate that risk, perhaps, to ensure that students are getting access to curriculum or to work, or whatever that might be in some fashion, while they are at home, you know, adhering to those protocols and guidelines.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Director Daly?
Because, because the absences typically now with, with the change in the isolation period are a little bit shorter in duration, but that, that really depends on how students feel. Although we say it's five days, it could be longer than that, and obviously if they don't feel well. For those shorter-term absences, students would still have the availability to access work on a teacher's T2L or Google page. For shorter-term absences, we don't typically have students join remotely. But for a longer-term absence, that would be something to have a conversation with the class. Certainly, there's, there's a greater number of classes now that may not have students that are learning remotely anyway. So we would have a greater number of students that we get when we're in law, that there might be no students who are remote workers, that everyone is face-to-face. But classroom teachers are, are maintaining course shells that students can access.
Thank you, Director Daly. Vice Chair Agnew, do you have a follow-up question?
Not at this moment. I'm just thinking on something.
I've been listening to this conversation, Director Daly, if there's a comment. Oh, and Trustee O'Herne, Trustee O'Herne, you have the floor.
I do, and thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So to my fellow trustees and Director Daly, I'm going back to the messaging. Again, it's been talked about where, you know, we can't mandate it, but we can follow public health and recommend as well. I try to stay out of the motion business as much as I can. Director Daly, would it be possible, you and the communications team, who are awesome, to be able to send something out, say, by the end of this week, messaging to our staff, our students and our parents in regards to these recommendations? And, and, you know, I don't have the data to prove it, but I'm sure at this point, you know, people that are going to wear the mask are wearing the mask, and people that are going to vaccinated are going to get vaccinated. They've probably made their decisions already. But is that something we could possibly do as a discussion item here by the end of this week?
Director Daly? Certainly, we could do it by the end of the week. I guess my question would be, is that direction is coming from the board? And if that is the case, that's fine. The way, you know, obviously, we will, we'll do the will of the board. We are meeting with public health this Wednesday. We haven't spoken specifically about COVID measures the last few meetings, but we are meeting with public health on Wednesday. What the topics of that, that meeting are, are what, what might be on the agenda from the public health side, I'm not sure of. But if, given the direction by the board to get messaging out, we can get the messaging out as soon as we need to.
Well, I guess my follow-up question, Director Daly, do you feel like getting messaging out to our parents and our staff and students is important at this time? Then it wouldn't be direction of the board to be, you know, you being the Director of Education, sending that out with your staff.
Director Daly?
We could certainly send a message out emphasizing the messaging from public health or from the chief of classroom. Yeah?
Thank you, Director Daly. Trustee O'Herne, do you have a follow-up question?
No, I do not. Thank you, Director Daly.
Can I see Trustee Murphy's hand up before Vice Chair Agnew? Trustee Murphy?
Thank you. It, it was relating to, it's, Trustee O'Hearn stole, has stole my thunder, as she, she always does, the thief of my thunder. It was just, actually, it was just commenting about when she'd asked previously whether public health had commented specifically about schools. In Public Health Ontario's evidence briefing on April 5th, they're quite clear, there's, there's quite a bit of discussion relating to schools. And in one of their paragraphs, it says, "Optimizing layers of prevention in K-12 schools, including improved ventilation, air quality, masking indoors, avoiding congregation of large unmasked groups, and access to well-fitted, high-quality masks can reduce the risk of in-school transmission and relation, and related disruption." So, so Public Health Ontario is very clear on the, the sublineage, the B8.2, on how communicable it is and how important it is that we address it in our schools, just for reference.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. I'll now move on to the next speaker. Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. And just listening as well to the conversations that we're having tonight, and some of the concerns around the public health piece now. And again, understanding that this is not our place, take a look at re-institution of any mandates, or as Director Daly said earlier, you know, taking a look at some of those recommendations, perhaps on additional measures that can be taken in the absence of mandates to try to keep our staff and our students safe. And so, you know, I, I don't want to put a motion either. I would like to sort of get the will of my fellow trustees. But I do think that there would be some value in us sending a letter to the Ministry of Education to just simply say that, you know, we would like them to take a look at that updated information, have they, you know, to take a look at the Public Health Ontario guidelines. I just want to make sure that the ministry knows that it's something that we are concerned about, that we're being affected with here in our region. Absentee rate is an issue. Kids and staff getting sick is an issue. And I just want to make sure that they are reading and adhering to as updated information as possible when they are making decisions for our schools as it pertains to health and safety measures. So I'm not going to tell them what to do, but I certainly want to make sure that they're listening to what the boards are saying, the issues we're having in our individual boards, and that they are doing everything they can and reading all of the available information to them in some of their decision-making. So I, I would like to send that letter. I think it would be important for us to, to let the ministry know the concerns that we do have and what we would like from them. And I'd like to get some feedback from my fellow trustees, if that's something that they feel would be of value.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Let me ask trustees if anybody has any comments on the suggestion? I'm not hearing any comments or any suggestions. Oh, Trustee O'Herne?
Hi, me again. So thank you, Vice Chair Agnew, for that suggestion. I think, you know, let's be realistic. We're going to send a letter to the provincial government, they know what public health is saying. But I think it goes back to that old adage, right? Silence is acceptance. So if we please ask them to please just look, you know, we are concerned, part of our job as a trustee is student achievement. And is this dominoing? Is this creating a bigger gap in our children's learning than it was even during COVID? That I think, you know, we can't be silent. And whether they do anything with it or not, it doesn't matter. We spoke, we spoke the truth, and our truth, based upon public health. So I would be okay with that, for sure.
Thank you, Trustee O'Herne. Trustee Murphy?
I, I agree. Again, we, we can't control and, and change people who have the authority to make decisions, but we can let them know what our position is, and that it comes from our community. And it's, and it's something that has been brought forward by our parents and, and by, by our teaching staff, and by our senior staff, and by, by our students. So it's up to them who have the, the power and the will to make change and make those decisions. But it's our responsibility to inform them of what our position is. And by saying nothing, then they would obviously assume that we're okay with the way that things are proceeding, which, which we're not.
Trustee Murphy, Trustee Guzzo, do you have a hand up?
I guess, thank you. Just to reiterate, I, I think it's a great idea, Trustee Agnew. I think everybody's pretty much hit the, hit the nail on the head. And, and same with the, the suggestion that Trustee O'Hearn Jurnota did, is I think that it would be great to send out communication to our parents. You know, I know with the high school students, some of them are still getting emails saying that, you know, COVID, there's COVID cases, reported COVID cases. But what we're not hearing is, is when the classes are canceled, et cetera. And I think that it's important for the parent community to understand that it's not isolated to one, one school, but it's actually happening, and that this, this is why it's still highly recommended. So I think that that would be our due diligence is, is to be acting on that. So I support both of them.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. Vice Chair Agnew, I do not have anybody else wanting to comment. What I'm hearing is, is general acceptance of the idea. Do you have any particular motion or?
So I don't have anything prepared. I don't. I wanted to see how our conversation... Oh, sorry. Someone have their hand up?
Yeah, can I start?
Oh, yeah.
Just a second. Trustee Caravella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to also recognize the importance that parents make in their health decisions for their children. And I think everyone is watching the news and, and listening. And, you know, that's why I really wanted this evening to have some documentation, something we can all have as the, as the document we can all be looking at and working with. So I also wanted to know if the superintendent involved with the COVID protocols, Superintendent Bakich, if she could speak to, to the protocols in the schools and, and, you know, how, how she's experiencing the feedback from the schools and about the parents and the children, and how are they managing right now?
Thank you, Trustee Caravella. I don't think Superintendent Bakich is here, but Director Daly will take that call. Yes, Trustee Caravella, this is meant to be an open discussion of concerns being raised by our peers, so I can only say that. Director Daly, would you like to answer?
I guess I could just comment that Superintendent Bakich or any of our family's school superintendents would certainly know the challenges that their school administrators are facing, trying to adequately cover all their classes, would know the, the, you know, the good work and the flexibility that our staff are showing around trying to cover classes as well. But it's certainly been a greater challenge, both at elementary and secondary over the last several weeks.
Thank you, Director Daly. Trustee Caravella, would you like to have a follow-up question there?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Caravella. Trustee Guzzo, do you have a hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to, to make a comment in regards to, to this meeting being called. I, I just want to thank you, Mr. Chair, for calling this meeting, because as Trustee Caravella mentioned, I have been listening to the news, I have been reading emails, I have been looking at the public health guidelines. And I think that's why this meeting was so important to be called, for us to discuss this. Because to be called, for us to discuss this, because we have all been paying a lot of attention and we have been listening to our students and to our parents in regards to everything that is happening in our schools right now and in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just thinking along strategies that we can do that are within our purview to do. What about assemblies and gatherings, large gatherings of students? You know, we don't want to, you know, sports is, I think, is very important to mental health and typically, you know, especially if they're outdoors, we don't want to have to get into restricting any, any things along those lines, they're so important. But is it essential to have indoor gatherings and assemblies of many hundreds of students? Is that something that we can look at temporally pausing?
Director Daly? Yeah, I think there's a number of things that we could do. You know, we've always talked about kind of mitigation strategies as a number of layers of strategies working together as opposed to one strategy or another. But, but, yeah, yeah, Trustee Murphy, the point's well taken if it's that, you know, if we don't need to have 200 or 300 or 400 or 500 students and staff in one room at the same time, there's probably ways that we can, we can work around that. Yeah.
Thank you, Director Daly. Trustee Murphy, do you have a follow-up?
No, no, I don't, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Chair Agnew, I think you have the floor.
Yeah, that's okay. That's okay. So, as I said, I don't have anything prepared, but I would, I think that's probably the only way that we could go ahead and send a letter would be with majority consent from my fellow trustees. So, I would like to put a motion on the table. I don't have all the details, sorry, Rosie, I'll have to figure that out, but just a letter to that effect, that, you know, that we send a letter on behalf of the Board of Trustees to the Ministry of Education, outlining our specific concerns here in Holton around, you know, the COVID-19 situation, the absenteeism rates, effect on student success and achievement, and, you know, again, ask for them to ensure that they're doing a full-scale review of all the information that's available to them, including the most recent Public Health Ontario documentation, when taking into consideration their decision-making around schools and these health and safety protocols. So, I will type something out.
Yeah. I just want to say, Vice Chair Agnew, that Rosie got all?
No, she didn't, and I'm talking aloud, I'm sorry, Rosie.
So, you want a five-minute break?
Yeah, is that, is that okay along the lines of what we're talking about? Because if it is, I can type something out if we can take a moment.
So, take a five-minute break? Is that okay, Vice Chair?
Yeah, I can type that out.
So, trustees, we'll take a five-minute break and reconvene at 7:59.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair. So, through you, this is the motion here for my fellow trustees to take a look at. It doesn't have a ton of detail, but that's something that I would work, we could work with communications on, or just leave to communications to express some of the concerns that have been brought forward here this evening.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. I shall now ask for a move up. May I have a move up?
I'm moving in.
Oh, sorry. Trustee. Vice Chair Agnew, looking for a second up, please?
Trustee Guzzo can second it.
Trustee Guzzo, okay. Vice Chair Agnew, you have five minutes to?
Oh, I don't need five minutes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we've had enough conversation this evening. Here's the motion for consideration. I do think it would be a good move, as Trustee O'Hearn-Chinada said. I do believe that silence is acceptance, and I just think it's important that we reflect that we are concerned about the way this has transpired in our schools currently and that we communicate that to the Ministry of Education. So, that's it for me.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. I shall now open up the floor for discussion. Trustees, any questions? Trustee O'Hearn-Chinada, Trustee Agnew, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Vice Chair Agnew. So, Vice Chair Agnew, the outline, outlining concerns with the current COVID-19 health and safety situation, I don't want to put you on the spot, but what concerns, do you have any point forms of those concerns? Is it all going to be based upon public health or?
Yeah, so.
Vice Chair Agnew, go ahead.
Absolutely. So, I mean, that's certainly input that I would welcome from anyone, you know, here. You know, we could be specific and mention, you know, the absenteeism piece has certainly been a concern, the current, excuse me, the current health and safety protocols or lack thereof. So, I mean, there's probably a number of things that we could put in there. I'm really open to it, honestly. You know, I just, I want to make sure that we are expressing our concerns with what's transpiring. One of the biggest pieces, obviously, being absenteeism rate. That's, you know, definitely a huge issue. And then just around some of the current mandates that have been lifted, are those in the best interest of our staff and students right now?
With tie of an underlining question, right? Vice Chair Agnew, just presenting the facts and then asking it with a question mark, saying, you know, please revisit, is that kind of the theme of this?
It is, you know, I was reminded during the break that, you know, we can't necessarily, you know, we can't tell the ministry how to respond or what to do. We can certainly express our, you know, our concerns to them, so that they're well documented and they know. And I think, you know, we can make sure that that's all covered off on in our letter so that they're very clear, you know, what we're bringing forward from HCDSP. Yeah, and then, I mean, at the end of the day, that, that's sort of the end of what we can do with that, right? It's just to make sure that we're bringing those concerns forward in a manner that is going to hopefully land on their desk and they're going to see and read through that.
Trustee O'Hearn-Chinada, you have any specific question on this?
No, I don't think so. I just, you know, when the motion's like this and it's not in front of us to kind of, you know, approve or deny, I just kind of want to get a feeling, the temperature of it. And I would think maybe putting in some actual statistics of our particular board with the help of Director Daly and Superintendent Oldman as best we can, because all the absenteeism is not maybe all COVID-related either. The 20% increase may not all be COVID-related, but it does have an impact. So, I would ask for some data to put in that, if we could get it.
So, do you want to, I mean, I'd be happy to, a friendly amendment, if it was outlining concerns with the current COVID-19. We can put a comment in there about data, or we can just ensure that that is in the letter when it comes to us for review?
I think it's better than.
That would be fine, yeah, that'd be okay with me personally. I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you. Next on the speakers, this to be her, Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Trustee Agnew, for bringing this motion forward. Just a thought, and I'm hoping it could be maybe a friendly amendment, but can we also ask that, once this letter is done, that it's shared with all of our parents? Like it be sent out on behalf of our Board of Trustees?
So, let me ask this of Director Daly. Director Daly, is it possible that this letter is sent out to parents or does it seem to be in the motion?
Well, if it's in the motion, I think it could be done either way. Typically, unless directed, we wouldn't let parents know of every motion that's passed at the board meeting. So, I think we could certainly get it out to parents once it's completed. There's no problems.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chair, I'm not asking that the motion be shared, that the letter be shared, that we're sending to the ministry. So, I'm not actually saying or suggesting that we share the motion, but the letter.
Correct.
Or get on behalf of our student staff and all of our stakeholders.
Correct, I think that's well received. So, we have the amendment, Vice Chair Agnew, there seems to be an amendment here, and you're asking for a friendly amendment, I'll have to go around the table and find out if there's any opposition or反对. It can be unanimous consent? Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Is the wording correct?
Letter, ministry be shared, yeah.
Okay. Let me go around the table and see if any trustees, if trustees are okay with this. Is there any opposition to adding the part in blue? Is there any opposition to, trustees, is there any opposition to adding the part in blue? That's a friendly amendment. Okay, seeing none, I shall consider this as the motion, the entire black and blue part as the motion. Moving down speakers list, we have Trustee Caravella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I do believe that, like, the minister is aware of all these issues, is aware of getting feedback from the community. I know that we get the weekly updates of the meetings with Director Daly and chairs, and there's the opportunity to raise the concerns there. And then there's this meeting coming up this Wednesday with Dr. Megany. There are others in the community that are not as concerned and with the changes in the protocol and welcome them and, you know, helping with the mental health of the students, having a return to normal as much as possible. So, I guess what I'm saying is that I'm not sure that this letter is needed and reflects all the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Caravella. I'll just add one thing to, one comment to what you said is, as trustees, we have a role played in the success of our students and that's achievement, and that's a big thing, is that we have got to do everything we can, and not speaking support or against, to see that our, as trustees, is student achievement, and we've got to think about that. So, I shall now move on down the speakers list to Vice Chair Agnew. Are you looking to close the discussion, Vice Chair Agnew, or what?
No, it's just a comment, Mr. Chair, I can include it in my closing if you like.
Yes. One second, let me just see if we have any other speakers. Okay, so, since we do not have any other speakers, I'll hand you the floor to close. You have three minutes to close.
Thank you, only three minutes, but just a comment, you know, on Trustee Caravella's comment, and it's well taken. And I think we need to be very clear that we are not, this letter is not asking for any reinstatement of anything. I think we've been quite clear, I think it's just expressing the concerns that we have, that teachers have, that staff have, that students and families have, it's just expressing those concerns so that the ministry is aware. I agree that we do have those calls with the minister on a weekly basis, but I don't know that I consider confidently and say that the Ministry of Education is acutely and intimately aware of these specific concerns, you know, of each region on its own. So, this is just our way of making sure that those concerns are being expressed in a formalized capacity. Again, no one's asking for reinstatement of anything, we're simply asking, or we're simply stating our concerns and just have those on the record. To Trustee Doerr's comments, I just think that that, I believe that that is part of our role. And so, that's it. The motion is the motion, I don't have much else to say, and that's it. And so that's it. The motion is the motion. I don't have much else to say. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Thanks for closing the discussion. I shall now call the vote. Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
Uh, in favor.
Justice Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Caravella?
I will abstain. Thank you.
Justice Boy?
In favor.
Justice Masrihammer?
In favor.
Justice Tokiba? Justice Tokiba?
In favor.
Justice Ovchinada?
In favor.
So we have four in favor, one abstained. The motion carries, the letter that we sent to the ministry by the twenty second. Thank you, trustees. Moving on to the next order of business, resolution regarding absentees. We have two absentees this evening. Director Daley can confirm? Trustee Adamasi and trustee De Rosa, Director Daley can confirm that?
That that record was reced?
Yeah. So I'd like to have a motion to
I will make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept absenteeism.
Accept, okay. Trustee Caravella moves. Looking for a second, please?
Murphy?
Justice Murphy, second. This motion, all in favor?
Mr. Chair, I just have a comment.
Thank you, trustee, trustee Guzzo. Okay, that is all right.
Just that, again, thank you for calling this meeting. And I know that there's been some some comments that today is is considered a a day that we should not be doing the business of the board. I I just want to reiterate that the business of our students and the safety of our staff and students are paramount and that, you know, I I don't think that arguing that that today is a day that we should not be working is a is an excuse for an absence. So I will be voting against accepting this as a the absenteeism.
A point of order?
Thank you. Trustee Caravella, can you state a point of order?
Well, the point of order is that we don't know the reason why. I think trustee Guzzo might be sorry, we don't have their reason and they they're entitled to give a notice of regret. I don't think we should be
Can you state the point of order, any, by the way, any procedure that we have broken?
Well, I don't think we debate this topic. The point of order would be that we don't debate the absenteeism.
So so trustee Caravella, your point is not that we see for a simple reason that we have moved a motion to to accept the absence and we have seconded it. So it's a motion. So I would say we have an opportunity for trustees to to discuss like any other motion. So trustee Guzzo has set apart which is due to trusting and that will and so we move on. If you do not have any speakers now, we'll take it for recorded vote. Thank you, trustee Caravella. We do not have any speakers, so I'll take it to our recorded vote. We are trying to give a motion here to to excuse trustee Adamasi and trustee De Rosa to move and seconded by, moved by trustee Caravella, seconded by trustee Murphy. I shall take this one to a recorded vote. Trustee, Vice Chair Agnew?
Um, I abstain.
Uh, trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Justice O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Caravella?
In favor.
Justice Boy?
In favor.
Justice Masrihammer?
In favor.
Justice Tokiba?
Abstain.
Justice Ovchinada?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
So we have four in favor, one opposed, one abstained, the motion to excuse, trustee Adamasi and trustee De Rosa carries. We shall now move on to the final hour of business, which is the general and closing prayer by our trustee Doerr. May I have a, please have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, I'll look at it.
Moved by Vice Chair Agnew, seconded by? Need a second?
I'll second it.
Trustee Ovchinada, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. I will now lead us in the closing prayer. Please join me in the sign of faith, Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Since this is the time, this is the prayer, dear Lord, may I realize the fresh day, where death and resurrection means to me. Forgiveness, freedom, and the ability to walk with you through this fallen world into eternity. May I always find my satisfaction in you and your willingness to offer yourself to me in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you for a great meeting. Everybody, good night, and we'll see you tomorrow in the regular meeting.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Night, everyone.